Well, it's 6:30, so let's bring this Select Board meeting of September 11th to order. I'd like to take a moment before we get started to just have a moment of remembrance since the 22nd anniversary of September 11th and for those more than 3,000 people died and the many injured and suffered trauma from. Thank you. Uh, roll call?
Sakoshia.
Happy yellow here. Let's rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Moving on for the. We'll go into tonight our agenda review. Does anyone have any comments on the agenda?
Second. Sakoshia.
Happy yellow eye. So before we begin public comment, I would like to read instructions for public comment. Meetings are open to the public, but public participation is limited. If you wish to be heard by the Select Board, please note the two public comment portions of the meeting to speak to items on the meeting agenda and/or matters pertaining to the business of the Select Board. Public meetings may also be scheduled for public comment on specific matters. Speakers must be residents of the town of Barrington, property owners, and/or designated representative of recognized civic organizations or businesses located in Barrington. When they are addressed and permitted to speak by the Chair, speakers first need to recite their name and address for the record. Visitors should address their comments to the Chair and the Select Board as a body and not to any individual member. Each person will be provided a single opportunity for comment, limited to three minutes. Public comment should be in general limited to a total of 15 minutes. Visitors should not expect a response to their comments or questions since the Select Board may not have discussed or taken any position in the matter. Public comment is not a two-way dialogue between Speaker's Select Board and the Town Administrator. The Chair will preserve strict order and decorum at all Select Board meetings. Obscene, violent, disruptive, disorderly comments are those likely to induce violence, disruption, or disorder are not permitted and will not be tolerated. Complaints regarding Town staff should be directed to the Town Administrator. So let's proceed. Is there any member of the public that's present that would like to make some comments? Looks like none, so let's look online.
If you're participating virtually, you can use the Teams feature to raise your hand, or if you're on a phone, you can press star six to unmute yourself, wait to be recognized by the Chair. There'll be another opportunity at the end of the meeting as well.
Okay. Public hearing and invited guest. Is there anyone here from the School Board who'd like to give a review? Next, I would like to call in Alexander Boston. Please come to the podium, state your name and address.
And just press that button to make sure the ring's green.
Okay.
Perfect. Thank you.
Okay. So my name's Alex Bostrom. I'm a resident of 113 Green Hill Road. And I have, or I was very close friends with Jerusalem Batelli, whom I'm sure we all know. She passed away this past Thanksgiving. She was like my best friend growing up, friends in second grade, the whole thing. So it was pretty heartbreaking, obviously, and it's been tough to see because her and I were obviously best friends, so I was always over her house. So it's been tough to see not only the impact she's had herself, but on her family has been really tough to see. So I've been trying to do everything I can to try and make it a little bit easier for the family. So they've had a scholarship fund set up for them. I think it was her Salve softball coach set it up right after I could GoFundMe. So it's been massively successful. Thank you, Connor. That's the website that I have set up. So I set up a turkey trot event in her name for this upcoming Thanksgiving, which would be the one-year anniversary exactly. So I think that this would be a really nice fundraiser for that scholarship fund that has been set up in her name. I already have everything set up. I've spoken to Officer Joy. He said that everything's good. He's all on board with helping me out with all this kind of stuff. I have it starting at the Barrington Youth Association, and then it's coming out to. Cut acrosses. What is it?
Chrissy Circle?
Meeting House, right? Oh, yeah, yeah. So we're going out to Chrissy Circle. So it starts at, like, it has the two entrances, so it's going to start at one of the two of those, but it's going to start at the B O I A and then out to Chrissy Circle, loop around, and then go all the way out to Meeting House, and then turn around and come back. So my idea was to have the road shut down between 9:00 and 10:00 a.m., which is on Thanksgiving morning, which is obviously not ideal for travel. But I was hoping to have it shut down early enough in the day where it's not going to impact as much of the travel plans for those that live on the road if we do have to shut it down. So I already have letters and everything drafted out for every, all of the residents. I was going to do signage all along the road, starting as soon as I could, letting everybody know what was happening, if they could reach out to me if there was any problems or anything like that. Just kind of wanted to give them the exact same sort of rundown of what's going to be, like, why I was doing this in the first place. So I wanted to have that all spelled out for everyone so they sort of understand the significance of this event. So I have this website where people can sign up. I already have, I think it was 124 last time I checked. So I have 124 people signed up. I have a bunch more that have committed to it. I have five sponsors as of today. I was going to do a T-shirt, the whole deal. So essentially, I was just sort of presenting this as a way to, I don't know how to say it, but like initiate a shutdown of the road between 9:00 and 10:00 a.m. where Officer Joy sort of spoke to me about doing a police detail and all that kind of stuff, where he would say he needed two, I think he was going to do a two officer detail for it, trying to just limit traffic, not exactly shut it down like entirely, but just kind of limit traffic as much as we can, just so people can run along the road.
Yeah, so those are the two requests for the Select Board to consider. So community event, we don't require permits for events in Barrington, but because it's a road closure, the Select Board has the off, the authority to okay the shutting down of roads. It'd still be open to local traffic, and that's what Chief Joy was talking about, having two extra people on. He volunteered to be one of them, but to manage the traffic coming and going so nobody's going to be stuck in their house. They can, you know, come out, people can go to their house, but to limit traffic and get a police presence there to make sure everybody remains safe. So the first request is to shut down the road, authorize the road closures, and the second request is to authorize the additional staff member at overtime to be paid by the town. There's similar requests we make for the PEEPER each year, and so that's a proposal for you.
So just before we take comments, on behalf of the Select Board, our sympathies to the law.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Right. Don't forget your microphone. So there are no planned interruptions, town operations on any of these roads during the potential closures? Just answer the question.
And Brewster Road was just paved with new lines.
Alex, I think I started coaching you in football way back when you were in seventh grade. What a, I'd say young man, but you're grown now. So what a man you've become. And a way to tribute your friend, I said, I had a similar loss, your age, or even a little bit younger, on Thanksgiving with one of my childhood friends. And what you're doing for your friend to raise awareness and to help with the scholarship is very noble, and I don't have a problem. It's an hour. Traffic's still going to be able to get by. Yeah, an extra detail, but this kind of stuff is what makes Barrington.
Yep.
Proud of you.
So does someone want to make a motion?
I'm moving to authorize partial closure of Chrissy Circle, Bruce Road, Smoke Street on Thanksgiving morning from 9:00 to 10:00, and to authorize Chief Joy to.
Second.
Roll call.
Hardikov, hi.
Sakoshia.
Happy yellow eye.
Thank you very much.
Good luck with your event.
We could, we could share. Thanks, Alex.
Thank you.
Thank you, Alex.
Is Mary Beth here?
She is. We're ready for you, Mary Beth. So Mary Beth Walker is our Assessor's Agent. She's here tonight to present to you the preliminary values from the 2023 revaluation. And for folks following along at home, we have a webpage, barrington.nh.gov/2023revow, which addresses, which includes these documents and the background, how we got to this point of directing the Assessor's Agent to perform a revaluation this year. So Mary Beth's here to discuss the results.
So Mary Beth Walker from Corcom Consulting. I'm your Assessor's Agent, and we performed the 2023 revaluation this year. The purpose of doing that was to bring all properties in line with market value for April 1st of 2023. We used sales from July 1st of 2022 right through August 1st of 2023 to bring our values in line with the market value. There were 142 sales that were considered to be valid sales. If we had not done the revaluation, we would be at 71% of market value. So that means the sale price, the assessed value is 71% of the sale price, and this is a median range that I'm telling, that I'm telling you about. The state of New Hampshire takes and does a ratio report for us every year, and they use sales from October of 2022 right through to the end of September of 2023 to determine a ratio for us. And of course, we can't wait till the end of September to perform the revaluation because it will hold up our tax rate setting. So we've used this range of sales. Using the 142 sales, we would have been at 71% of market value, and I've brought them up to 98% of market value. 93 of those sales were single-family homes, and the average sale price was $521,000. That's the average. Is the average sale. Our range was 199,000 to over $1 million. The mobile homes, there were 20 of them that sold during this time period, and the average sale price was 144,000. We would have been at 65% of market value, and I've brought them up to 98%. There were only a few condominiums in that sale price area, time period. There were four of them. We would have been at 68% of market value, and I brought them up to 98, 99% of market value. We had 14 vacant land sales, and that, they would have been at 81% of market value, and I brought them up to 98% of market value. So what does that mean in overall, what's going to happen for the shift in values? Our single-family homes will be seeing an average of 35% increase and the waterfront a 36% increase in assessed value. Now, when I say average, when we adjust the values, we adjust based on square foot, neighborhood, type of property, how many stories there are, how many acres there are. So it's not going to be a straight 35%. Everybody went up 35%. Some people may have only changed 5%. Some people may have changed 75%, but this is the average increase. Mobile homes, the single wide mobile homes was changed about 35%. The double wide mobile home changed about 44% in value. They went up. The commercial property saw an average increase of 14%, and the land about 33%. So overall, we gained approximately 30% in our assessed values, and I'm pretty much ready to do the MS1 whenever you folks approve the value changes.
Just a couple of things to add on top. Thank you, Mary Beth, for that. There's the, a common disconnect with folks in understanding the purpose and the requirements of a town with assessed values. And I, I like to try to describe it as simple as I possibly can in a couple of different ways. First, the state requirement of each municipality is to have assessed values as close to fair market value as possible, period. And so that's what Mary Beth was talking about. The state comes in once a year, looks at a sampling of our sales, looks at our assessed values, and says, hey, you're doing a good job. You're doing a bad job. And so that's a requirement by the state. Additionally, as far as taxes go, right, the changing of values, the revaluation that we're performing this year, does not generate any additional revenue. So all the money that we need to operate our town government and our school government, our county government, is approved by voters in March, period. A revaluation redistributes where those tax dollars come from, simply based on property values. So if a property value goes up, the proportional share goes up also. But as Mary Beth said, 30% is the average. So all values are going up an average of 30%. Some will be more, some will be less. Some individual taxpayers will pay more in taxes than they would have because their property value went up higher, a higher proportion than the average. Some prop, the, some of the property taxes that individual property owners pay will also go down. And I'll point out, as, as one of the outliers, Mary Beth mentioned that the commercial property, the average increase in value was 14%. So the commercial property in Barrington, what the market says, what the real estate market says is that the value of those properties hasn't increased at the same pace as residential property. And so it's very possible that the actual taxes paid by some of the commercial property in town will be less than last year because it's about maintaining a proportional share of the total tax burden. And then the last point that I'll make is about property taxes as a whole. So property taxes doesn't say you receive this much in services, so you should pay this much in taxes. That's not how our tax system is based. Property taxes is simply, the fair market value of your property is this, so you pay that much of a proportional share of your taxes. And a good example is commercial property. Commercial properties don't put kids in schools. Commercial properties don't have a lot of demand on our highway department. A lot of them are on state roads, but they're not taxed based on the services they receive. They're taxed based on the value of their property. Similarly, a single-family home on a waterfront piece of property, and a single-family home, the same home on just a regular, maybe even a private road, receives very similar services, but pays very different taxes. And that's because the property value is different for those two properties. And Barrington didn't invent using property taxes as a requirement of the state. That's how we collect the majority of our taxes. So again, raising values does not raise more revenue. Voters decide how much revenue we need when they vote in March, and the tax rate, last point, is that the tax rate will be going down, right? So the values, our value increase of $414 million will expand our tax base. So now we have a bigger pool that we're dividing the total amount of money we need by, which will reduce the tax rate. Our tax rate will be well below $15,000 as a result of the increased values. And so people will look at their, you know, hey, 30%, our values are going up 30%. The taxes people pay will not go up 30% because the tax rate will go down probably somewhere around 25% or 28% based on the additional appropriations in March. Thank you.
Question. Is mixed use, is that in commercial or is that residential?
That's a good question. Can you address how you assess mixed use?
I can, yes. So mixed use, depending on what you mean by mixed use specifically, is...
Commercial and residential.
Yep. So it's based on what is the property being used for. So to me, a mixed use might be partially retail, partially apartments. We have a special rate for that based on sales of properties of that type. If, if, so I don't know exactly which property you might be talking about, but if there's a specific property that you want to talk to me about, we can do that at any point in time. But mixed use, any, any property is based off of its use on April 1st of 2023. Whether it's vacant, if a house is partially built, if a property is partially improved, it's all based on April 1st of 2023. And what is the utility of that parcel? What is the use of it?
Do we have any mixed use in town or no?
There's small-scale mixed use, right? So commercial with apartments nearby or on the same property. But there are more coming, right? The conditionally approved behind the Christmas stuff. There's a large mixed-use building as part of that. And so that creates a challenge for Mary Beth and her team to assign values when there isn't a lot of sale data. And again, they look at appraisals, they look at nearby communities, they look to see what is this type of, what's the value of this type of property in, in Barrington.
Perfect. Thank you.
If I could just address one thing, the big question would be, what if I don't agree with my assessed value? You cannot appeal your assessed value until you receive your tax rate and you receive your fir, your, your final bill of the year. Once you receive your final bill of the year, you want to look at, what is your assessment? Look at your property record card. Make sure there's no errors on your property record card. And if there are, you want to give us a call, the assessing department, and Amanda can schedule an appointment for us to do an inspection. And separately from that, once you receive your final tax bill, you can file what's called an abatement. That abatement, you need to supply documentation as to why you believe it's not market value, not just, I don't agree with your value. You, the rules are set up by the Board of Tax and Land Appeals, and it specifies what documentation you might need to determine what market value is. And then we have, you have until March 1st of next year to do that, and we have until July 1st of next year to respond to you. And all of our recommendations will go to this board before anything is done with the abatement applications.
Mary Beth, can residents access their cards online, or do they need to come in?
So the new property record cards will be online probably when Tiffany's available. She's the one who does that, that conversion of our file onto online access. So I would imagine it might be another week or two before, whenever she gets back, that she can put that up there. Then they can go online and actually see what their new values are, and they can look at their property record card and see if there's any errors that they might see right off the bat.
I thought when we addressed as a Select Board, the proposal to go forward with revaluation, that we did not decide to go to 98%, but a percentage that was lower than.
That's not my recollection. So the goal, the DRA requires on every five-year review between 90 and 110%. And so the target is always 100%. Every time we've done a revaluation, the direction has been target 100% to keep current.
I don't know why I recall that we, we had talked about doing some type of incremental review. I'll have to look back to the meeting minutes from that meeting.
Dan, a microphone. Thank you.
My impression of the way we did this was we were going to do this every year as opposed to every five years, which statutory requirement, that that would be the incremental increase as opposed to just bummie up to the state requirement of five years, where we'd have a big one. So I thought that's how we covered the incremental nature of this.
Maybe.
And that is what the town has essentially done. Obviously, the real estate market in Barrington and the greater Seacoast, New Hampshire area has been crazy. So the town did updated values in 2017, 2019, 2021, and now in 2023. And, you know, to the point of incremental changes, the value in, in staying on top of the assessed values is kind of twofold. One, to limit large adjustments. Mary Beth can tell you some of the communities that she's been in and, and done over 50% average adjustments in values, which is a lot in any one year. But the second point, and maybe the more important point, is to make sure that the tax burden is appropriately distributed among all the property owners in town. So if you wait five years and you see, over those five years, one property category value changes a lot more than the other, that means over the, over that time, the different property categories would be paying a disproportionate share of their tax burden. So every year, monitoring, in this case, the 142 sales that happened, to say, what is the exact real estate market in Barrington, and how can we make sure that as required by the state, each property taxpayer is paying their proportional share. And Mary Beth mentioned about the abatements, two points on that. One, for the last couple of years, we've included a double-sided insert in every tax bill that goes to residents. And when we've done a revaluation, one full half of the informational sheet that we include addresses how to review your property record card, how to file for an abatement, what exemptions and credits you might be eligible for, to make sure that we put the tools in the hands of residents to make sure not only the information's accurate, but also that if they're eligible for an exemption or credit, they know what's available. The second point is that the, an abatement isn't just about the value of your property. It's also about making sure that your value is proportion, are proportional to your neighbor. So an example would be if your property record card says that the value of your property is $500,000, and you go get an appraisal and it says it's $500,000, then that means that the appraisal meets the fair market value. But if you live in a neighborhood with a dozen other homes just like yours, and all of those homes are assessed at $300,000, then you can also file for an abatement and say, this house is the same as mine, has all the same details, all the same features, built the same year, but mine's assessed at $500,000 and theirs is assessed at $300,000, which would mean you'd be paying a disproportionate share of your property taxes. And you can file for an abatement, bring that to the attention of the Assessor's Office, and they'll get that corrected either in changing values or processing. Microphone.
It sounds to me like the potential for that to catch up is not going to be until the next review.
So, yes, the, depending on where you draw the line last 12 months, assessing is simply a snapshot in time on April 1st, period.
Okay.
So it is one snapshot, and it's April 1st. All the values that you're looking at here, those values are the values as of April 1st. Mary Beth knows because she watches this closely, what has changed since April 1st, because she pays attention to that for the future. But right now, we're talking about values as of April 1st and the condition as of April 1st. To your larger point about variances and their impact on property values with allowable uses, as you heard Mary Beth say earlier, it all boils down to the use of the property. And so when it's developed, and it's developed for a use, and that use brings value and changes the value, that would be reflected in the assessed value. The building department, when building permits are pulled, those all flow through the assessing office also, so that those building permits and the changes to a property flag the property for inspection to make sure that the value is accurately updated.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
Yeah. Mary Beth, just to help me here, I kind of got through most of this particular chart, but I didn't quite understand the last three columns, sale price, the 2023 total, and then the 2022 total. Can you tell me what those three columns mean?
Yes. Backing up one to the sale date. So for example, the first property sold on September 15th of 2022, the sale price was 206,000. The assessed value right now is 210, and the assessed value in 2022 was 25,000. That part, that was just a partially started property at that in 2022.
So that would indicate you've gained almost $200,000 value, is that?
Correct. And that particular property, it was a foundation only on.
Understand.
Yep.
Thank you.
So the request before the Select Board tonight is to approve the 2023 revaluation as presented. As Mary Beth said, once that happens, we'll go through the process. It'll take a couple of days, but certainly by the end of the week, we'll make property record cards available online. That will also That will also give Mary Beth the ability to finalize the MS-1, which is the state form, which provides the state our assessed values so that they can begin setting our tax rate. And then when tax rate setting comes, I'll be back before the select board to finalize that.
Other questions? Go ahead.
I move that we accept the 2023 revaluation as presented.
Roll call.
Part of call five.
Man check guy.
Capelloi.
Motion is passed. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mary Beth.
Our next item is library trustee presentation. Is Susan here? Great, come on. You all sit in the back, I can't see past people.
It's like church, then.
And Susan, if you'd like me to pull something up?
Yes, yeah.
Just the floor plans, maybe?
Yes, exactly.
Now or?
That's fine.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, I'll let you get started, I'll be pulling that up.
Yes, so this is, I was only here a month ago.
Do introduce yourself for the record.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm Susan Guardiello, 528 Franklin Pierce Highway, and I am the chair of the Library Trustees. As you know, we've been working on plans for a new library. And when I was here last month, I shared with you floor plans for a new construction proposed on Ramsdale Lane. The, our intent, and we did hold an open house for the public to share that with the public and get input from the public as well. A lot has happened in the last several weeks, however. Before even the open house, I was made aware by Selectment Secochea that another building, existing building, has come on the market. It's the, I think it's called the Walk-In Care Clinic of Frisbee. And you may have known it by other names, but basically, it's the Frisbee Medical Office Building that is on 125, just north of the Route 9 intersection. We, with Connor's help, were able to arrange with the real estate agent to actually take a walkthrough of the building with our architect and on, just before that open house. So, when we went to the open house, we shared with the public both the nice-looking floor plans of a new building and the information that this other building was a possibility, an opportunity. And I will tell you, we had a good turnout and people thought the drawings for the new building looked very nice and all that. And then they went over and, as soon as they heard about this building, everyone was very enthusiastic about that opportunity. The building committee recommended, at the close of that, made their recommendation to the trustees that we basically pivot and pursue the walk-in clinic rather than new construction. The, and the trustees met on the 29th of August, received that recommendation, and unanimously voted to make that change. Basically, the trustees voted to recommend to the, to the Board of Selectmen, or the Select Board, that the town pursue the purchase of that building for transformation into a new library. I know in the Town Administrator's Report, Connor outlined the state law about that whole process. So, basically, it's the Select Board that would need to pursue that purchase. What I, what we did pending that was, of course, we needed to see if this building with 24 examination rooms and 24 sinks and all sorts of other stuff, you know, what it would look like as a library. So, we had our architect basically go through that exercise, and that's what you see on the screen. And for anybody who's interested in this, who's maybe on by watching this, it's available linked through Connor's report for tonight's meeting. Essentially, what would happen under this to make the best utilization of the square footage, which is a little less than what we were designing for the library on Ramsdale Lane, which was already a couple thousand less than we had been talking about several years ago. So, I'm not sure exactly what the square footage is on this building. We've had a couple of different numbers. It's somewhere between 8,500, I think, and 9,000 or something, but I don't have a final number on that. What the architect did was he, I don't know how he did this, but with CAD computer rated design, he imported the floor plan and then did this design. Basically, it removes all the walls that were there and a lot of other stuff. And then, because what we need in any library we have is good sightlines, a lot of open space, both for flexibility, but also for just maximum use, maximum purposes. So, there, the, so many of us who took a walkthrough, and I should add that we did another walkthrough on September 6th, which was the last date of our building, library building committee. Connor was able to come to that, as well as Mrs. Capiello, Mr. Gibson, who's on the building committee, a couple of other members of the building committee, and myself, the architect, and two people from the construction management firm that we use. So, we really got everybody around the table. The, the building, we remain extremely enthusiastic about this building. I guess I'll just lay that, lay that out there. We think it will be not only a great location, it's a very attractive building, very well-built. It even has a full building generator that looks to me like it could generate power for multiple buildings. It's huge. It has nice, mature landscaping, a big parking lot. You know, really, it looks like it was made to be a library and they made a medical building out of it. The, and it would be far less expensive than building new construction, which is a very attractive aspect of this project. We do not have those numbers yet. The process at this point is the architect is making a few small changes in the design based on the building committee's input. That is going, that new design is going to come back to the library trustees next week. Our trustee meeting is the 19th. It will then go to the construction management firm to be costed out, I guess with their subcontractors, so that we'll have a much more certain estimate of the cost to do the job. All we need is the building. The, trying to think if there's any, I think that's really the sum and substance of where we are at this point.
I'd like to open it up for questions and comments. Well, I guess, one of the things that I noticed, in addition to how you described the building, is it's really well insulated. It was really quiet. This building sits on 125, and we know how much traffic is there. It was really quiet inside the building.
And, and this design doesn't change anything in that outside envelope. So, it's not like, oh, we're going to take and, you know, take these windows out or, you know, move, that sort of thing. All the, all the change is interior.
What a journey it's been that you guys have been on to try and get a new library in process. And I'm glad you took it into consideration to go over and check it out. I think it's, it's, it's a, it's an achievable goal, right? That's how I see it. You know, we've got, yes, construction is going to happen, there's going to be costs endured, but it's not going to be what the new one was going to be at anywhere close to that. So, I'm very happy about that. One thing I do want to look at before, you know, we give it the go-ahead and everything, is I'm curious to see how the MOU is going to look between the town and the library as far as the property and whatnot, and the services that we share now and how that goes. Have you guys thought about that at all?
Connor and I have talked a little bit about that. And we haven't drawn anything up because the library has always been housed in a town building that is, you know, used for other purposes. So, it's kind of early yet, you know? I, I don't have a sense of that. I guess I would say, as Connor and I spoke, and I'll let you speak for yourself, but it's logical that the library budget in the future, if we were to get this building and transform it and move in, that it would be logical that the expenses related just to this building as a freestanding building would be shifted into the library budget. So, and that is true of many other towns that have this sort of arrangement, where the heating, the utility bills, things like that are in the budget. As far as things like mowing the lawn and plowing the parking lot, you know, I would hope that the town would be able to help us out with that. But that's something we'll have to discuss.
And I think that's the, those are the details of an MOU, which I think would be important to iron out. We're fortunate, compared to a lot of other municipalities, to have a very good working relationship with the library. I think the taxpayers benefit a lot from that because we don't simply leave the library to do everything. A lot of things the town's also doing on their own at a higher cost. All payroll, human resources, accounts payable, you know, facilities work, the grounds maintenance. And as Susan said, it's in the same building, so that makes it easy now. But there are some things that it might not make financial sense for the library to take on on their own. But that all needs to be spelled out in MOU. I think it's a point well made about the value in itemizing that now. And it's not just for the select board that exists now and the library trustees that exist now, but in the future, creating a document that says, this is how the town and the library work together. You know, Susan and I talked briefly about the value of putting the operating costs in the operating budget for the library. So, that, that's the intent of the statute relative to library budgeting. I always forget the exact language, but the statute says something like, "The Select Board shall propose a budget that's adequate to operate a library." Paraphrasing.
Something like that.
I'm looking at the former chair of the Library Trustees Association. I expected that was in the-
I haven't committed that all to memory. It always says that the trustees are responsible for the entire management. A building and something goes awry in the building, the libraries are ultimately responsible. But it comes down to what we, what we negotiate with the town as to what works out. What, what the town cannot assume then has to be the library trustee's responsibility, and we have to budget accordingly. And we don't even have, unless you've got an information, Connor. Among the information that we'll need from the real estate agent is, what was the last year of heating expense, electrical expense, things like that? I'm sure they use a lot more electricity. I don't know if that, they have a lead-lined room for x-rays. I don't know if that's been in use or-
Right. And I think, since you brought up the point, Jim, I think it would be appropriate for the Select Board to talk about the timeline that you want to start working through an MOU. I would suspect, although I haven't talked to them, I would suspect that some of those questions about costs and where they'll be are questions that the Budget Committee would have. So, it might be beneficial to iron that out, maybe even sooner than we think is necessary, just to take some of those questions off the table so that when, you know, residents are presented with this opportunity, they can see a clear division of, here are the extra costs, here's where those extra costs are expected to end up. And that's especially important because, you know, like the heat and utilities to operate that building won't show up in an operating budget until probably 2025. And so, they'll be presented with a proposal to buy this building and renovate it and the costs associated with that. But the, a clear communication of, these are the extra costs and these are where they will end up in the budget come 2025 operating budget, that will be really important to have good transparency. So, ironing that out now, I think would only be beneficial, but I'm interested to hear what other members think.
I'm excited about this. I'm excited for a few reasons. The town is going to continue to grow. I love that this is an opportunity to present to the residents an entire package well thought out with all the plans in place and the vision for the library in place. But I think what's really exciting is that there's so much land surrounding this that as the town of Barrington continues to grow, and it, and it will, there's no stopping it. You can't stop people from using land they own. I, I think the potential for what the library needs to be and become can take place on those almost four acres, and that's super exciting. Thank you for all the hard work that-
Well, and I have to tell you, I have gotten more feedback. I was walking with a friend the other day who's a trustee at the Lee Library. They have a knitting group, and apparently, she told me, two people from Barrington had come to their knitting group, and they were all excited, talking about this potential for a new library at this particular location. So, you know, obviously, word is out there and people excited. And part of it is, a lot of people are excited to have it more downtown, I'm going to call it, as opposed to where we had originally planned. And they know what the building looks like. You know, it's not just an idea, it's very concrete. What we have done in pivoting in this direction, as you can tell, is we are now spending our funds on the architect and the design work solely on this option. So, I'm hoping that if you decide to pursue this purchase on our behalf, that that will be able to move forward. Obviously, we don't want somebody else to snap it up before we get a shot at it. And if we, if this did not come to pass, we would be having to pivot back or, you know, go in a different direction. And we still would like to bring a proposal forward for the 2024 ballot.
Yannick?
I was just going to add that I think it's an excellent building, excellent location, and incredible opportunity to save the residents a lot of money. You know, I know the numbers aren't final yet, but, you know, when they talk about building a new building, they throw around 450 per square foot, and whereas a renovation, 250 square foot. So, there's an opportunity to save a lot of money in this process too.
It's like millions.
Yeah.
Obviously, there is a purchase price on the, on the building, so we, you know, that's going to be dependent on the negotiation skills of the Select Board, I guess, as to what that turns out to be.
So, I just want to make sure that, you know, us five here, we would be giving the authorization for a purchase of 1.1 million?
I don't know that we're going to put a figure on it.
Okay, well, it's just for sale there.
Yeah.
At most, right? What it's listed for.
At most, because I think there's a lot of hope that there could be some negotiations.
Yeah, and, you know, everybody needs to write off, right?
We hope.
But then, you know, are you guys, are you guys comfortable authorizing that? You know, where, where if we do wait for a town meeting, you know, we may miss that egg? Or is there a way in the negotiations and so on and so forth?
Yeah, it's a great question, and the plan is the latter. I want to be clear about something. So, it is perfectly legal in New Hampshire with the right-to-know law to sit down and have all of these conversations in non-public behind closed doors. And some would argue that that's the better way to do it. Because what we're doing right now is we're telling the world that, hey, the town is interested in buying this building, and this is a good building, and it's good value, and it's got a good generator and all of that. The, you know, Susan and Joyce and I and Tracy have met on different things, talking about this project. Nobody thinks that's a good idea because we need to be open and transparent and upfront with the community. And so, that's the right thing. So, to your second point about how do we approach this then in trying to get under agreement and arriving at a purchase price, a potential purchase price, and then March? So, what we're asking for right now is authorization from the Select Board that, hey, you think this is a good idea, authorize Joyce and I and Susan to get with the real estate company and start working on an agreement, purchase and sale agreement. But all of those details to include whatever the purchase price might be, if it's included in the purchase and sale, to come back before the Select Board for a decision before anything is signed. So, we're not seeking authorization to do anything, we're just seeking authorization to start that conversation. And to your point about between now and March, we're hopeful, and in the world of commercial real estate, the time between now and March really isn't that long. And so, we don't anticipate issues with negotiating the terms of a purchase and sale that would say, hey, our terms are, we're not making a final decision until March. We can put all of this pen to paper, but our decision is contingent on voter approval of funding in March. And so, that's how we would structure, that would be a minimum threshold for structuring the purchase and sale. But the important point is the details of any purchase and sale would come back before the Select Board for a final decision, just giving us the authority to go start the conversation on the town's behalf.
I needed to know.
Thank you.
I'm looking forward to not having to stand on a stool to get the top shelf or crawl around on my knees to get the bottom shelf books. But I would make a motion to authorize the Town Administrator- But I would make a motion to authorize the town administrator with the select board chair and the library trustee chair to begin negotiations on the purchase and sale of the property at 426 Caleb Highway. Terms of purchase and sale would be subject to select board review and the approval at the upcoming town meeting, I believe.
Well, first, select board meeting?
Right.
And then alternate town meeting.
Enthusiastically, yes.
Gibson, yes.
Mantrick, yes.
Secoshia.
Capiello, aye.
Thank you.
All right.
Thank you, Susan.
All right, moving on. We're going to discuss the issuance of a building permit on Kelly Lane, a private road for Joseph Sweeney and Deveron Beckwith. We discussed this at our August meeting. Since that time, the applicant has brought the road up to the Class 6 and private roads. And this has, his plan is finished. I think all of the work is completed, and the planning board has approved this. The one issue that the select board can entertain, of course, is to accept it and then whether to require the applicant to build a paved apron. That would be beyond what our Class 6 and private road policy says. The planning board did not feel they had the authority to require that the select board could. And we will allow you to make a statement.
Well, the purpose of the, of the road improvement, we've met that. Excuse me. As to the apron, I don't believe there is a private road in Barrington with a new construction, new being within the past year, that has an apron. It certainly does. I lost the word. It certainly does make for a financial hardship for us by increasing the, the cost of our, of our project.
And for the record, Mr. Sweeney, would you state your name?
I'm sorry, Joseph Sweeney, presently at 96 Rocky Hill Road in Somersworth.
So questions or comments from the board?
I believe Mark has that comment, made that comment that we're not sure how long it would take to get it. This is on a state road, so it has to be a state approval as opposed to what we can do. And the apron and the road is at, at speed. I mean, the road, they've made the improvements to the road itself as required, so.
Yeah, it's a good point. We've reached out to the District 6 Department of Transportation to talk about a driveway permit. They're certainly open to approving a driveway permit at Kelly Lane for paved apron. The timeline might not align with the certificate of occupancy, but for a small scope like the paved apron, be, you know, no more than $2,000 estimated by the road agent. We could, you know, put a contract together like we've done on Micah Point Road to give additional time to complete that scope if the select board is concerned about the, the timing.
I say it's a state road, and they make that call on the apron?
Well, they don't have the, the state doesn't have the authority to require a paved apron. And so the paved apron does two things. One, the paved apron protects the edge of the pavement for the state. But the paved apron also creates basically a launching platform for people to pull out onto Route 9. So they're not going from gravel to pavement. They're going from pavement to pavement. And it's a process that the town has underwent over the last couple of years, starting with our own roads, right? Putting our money where our mouth is, installing paved aprons on all the gravel Class 5 roads where they touch either paved state roads or paved town roads for added safety of where that intersection happens between gravel and pavement.
I'm in agreeance with you, you know, he's met the standards, you know, it's kind of, kind of put him in a hardship.
I appreciate as well that the planning board does not recommend that. They have clearly stated that. Do we have to hear from public on this?
Yes, as public hearing.
Are you finished, Mr. Sweeney?
I am.
Give us a few more minutes.
Okay. I really, I can't think of much to add to this. I mean, I know that the apron is kind of a question. The planning board didn't recommend it. And the road's been there for, I don't know, 50, 60 years. And to the best of my knowledge and that of my neighbors, there's been no accident there. Some years ago, two years, I think, there was a huge pine tree on the corner. And I, I negotiated with the power company with Eversource to get rid of that. And that's increased our view to the east.
Why don't you have a seat and we'll go to public comment? Thank you. Come on up, introduce yourself and tell us where you live.
Hi, I'm Paul Prepper, I own Kelly Lane. And, and the, the road, as far as the apron and all that's concerned, I've also been a contractor my whole life. If you see the condition of what's there now and the type of gravel that's been used and what's going to be ultimately used, that's not the finished product. It's going to have another layer of gravel over it. My son's doing the work for, for Mr. Sweeney, and we discussed leaving the rough gravel down until the construction's done. And then he's going to cap that edge with some more finer gravel, some crushed stone. That's, that's as good, that's as good. It's actually higher than a, it's just a bit higher than the road now to allow for some compaction for some added material. You're not going to have a better road. It's all crushed concrete. And if you know anything about it, give that a year or so, and it's going to be as good as a sidewalk. So I just think you're wasting the man's money if you make him do that. Thank you.
Is there someone else? Please come up.
Hi, my name's Rick Seneschal. I live at 19 Kelly Lane, across the street from him. I just wanted to make a comment that while an apron would be great, this road's been there for, I can't imagine how long this road's been paved over and over again. And the town has, town or state who have a paving site has had it, had the opportunity to put an apron on it anytime as, as it rode. So to put it on an individual now, I personally think is unfair. So a, a, as a neighbor, frankly, I could go either way on it. But, but I just think the opportunity has been when they've paved it to do something about it, and they haven't. So I just wanted to make that comment, so.
Is there anyone else for public comment in the room? Before we go online, select board, Secoshia has a comment.
So do you have a contractor doing the work? Do we have a, it's going to be completed by?
Mr. Sweeney, if you could come back up to the microphone just so it's on the recording. Thank you.
Joe Sweeney again. Assuming that I have a building permit, he can get in there and begin work on it immediately to grade out the, the property itself and to place a pad. He's assured me that he could have it done by the first week in October. Now, given weather delays and whatever, I'm, I'm sure by October 15th will be complete.
I'm, I'm ready to make a motion for this family so they can get their house built. Make a motion to authorize the issuance of a building permit for map 234, lot 6 on Kelly Lane as presented.
I would suggest it's map 270. Or is that the Holly Lane?
That's Holly.
Sorry.
I just want to clarify before you vote on that. It's presented with an apron. It sounds like the select board does not want an apron. So you should amend your motion.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry, as, as recommended by the planning board, I should say, not requiring an apron. So make a motion to authorize the issuance of a building permit for map 234, lot 6 on Kelly Lane and to exclude an apron on Kelly Lane as a requirement in the upgrade to the road.
Roll call.
Hardikov, aye.
Gibson, aye.
Mantrick, aye.
Secoshia.
Capiello, aye. Thank you. Let's go on to item F, issuance of a building permit on Holly Lane, a Class 6 road, going map 270, lot 74. So we also discussed this application at our last meeting. And we are, we asked the road agent to take a look at it, and I think all of you have probably seen the comments.
Yes, Kevin Roy, now temporarily at 100 Concord Highway in Barrington. Has presented, I think, all the additional information. It's got to the road agent, and he's reviewed it. There's his report. It sounds like it's pretty cut and dry.
Make a motion to us.
We need.
Oh, public comment too, right?
Oh, we didn't go online comment on that last one.
I was watching, nobody put their hand up, nobody was unmuted themselves.
Thank you. Is there public comment on this application? Doesn't look like there's anyone in the room. Is there anyone online for public comment? Looks like not.
I would like to make a motion to authorize the issuance of a building permit for map 270, lot 74 on Holly Lane as presented.
Second.
Roll call.
Gibson, aye.
Mantrick, aye.
Secoshia.
Capiello, aye. The motion carries. You are free to.
Thank you, Mr. Roy.
Much appreciate your time.
Happy home building.
I, I'm ecstatic already being here. I'm even more ecstatic now.
Lots, lots of work. Good job.
I've actually done a lot of the work on the road since the last meeting, so.
Great.
Trying to keep this thing moving forward, so. Thank you very much.
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to keep interrupting. I just want to make sure, so the as presented is including a bond recommendation from the engineer to bond the portions of the road just for stabilization and return it to its existing capacity, but also to allow the engineer to oversee the structural changes, you know, installation of culverts, installation of turnarounds, things like that.
You can do that with a small insurance bond instead of.
Of course.
Okay.
I'm just making sure everybody was in agreement to that. Okay.
Yes.
Great, thank you.
Thank you very much, appreciate your time.
Moving on to the consent agenda.
Make a motion to approve the September 11th, 2023 consent agenda, A through I, as presented.
And I would second that.
All right, roll call.
Hardikov, aye.
Gibson, aye.
Mantrick, aye.
Secoshia, I was not here for the last meeting, so I am present.
Right, and Capiello, aye. That motion carries. Item, let's see, preview this.
Appointments.
Appointments. Appointments for planning board. We have Donna Masucci, who is applying for a full member on the planning board. She has been an alternate member, and her term would expire in 2026. Well, wait a minute.
2025.
In 25. Oh, that was her alternate that was expiring in 2026. All right, is there any discussion on Donna?
I'd like to make motion to appoint Donna Masucci as a member of the planning board with a term expiring in 2025.
Go again.
Hardikov, aye.
Gibson, aye.
Mantrick, aye.
Secoshia.
Capiello, aye. The planning board really will appreciate this vote. Moving on, Stratford Metropolitan Planning Organization Technical Advisory Committee, which is part of Stratford Regional Planning. Vanessa Price has applied for that in her position as town planner, and so we'll be voting on this tonight.
I have a quick question for the town administrator. How many hours is, is being committed to this work?
That's a good question. It's, it's not a lot. I know that, I think the meetings are usually monthly on Friday mornings, so it doesn't conflict with the town hall operations. And this is our opportunity. The Stratford Regional Planning Commission works with the state on developing their 10-year transportation plan. And so this is our seat at the table to advocate for state road improvement projects in Barrington.
Yes, I did research to figure out what this was.
Oh.
Because I really didn't have a clue, so, thanks.
You're welcome.
So I'd make a motion to appoint Vanessa Price as a member of the Stratford Metropolitan Planning Organization Technical Advisory Committee with a term expiring in 2025.
Second.
Roll call.
Hardikov, aye.
Gibson, aye.
Mantrick, aye.
Secoshia.
Capiello, aye. The next one is one of our representatives to the Stratford Regional Planning Commission. We had previously voted on Matt Towne to fill a position. Now that seat is open, and this would be appointing him as a member with a term expiring in 2027.
And I have a quick question. Can you describe the role that this resident on behalf of Barrington plays with Stratford Regional?
So we have two members.
Okay, and the, and the roles they play?
So the Stratford Regional Planning Commission is the governing body of the Stratford Regional Planning. And so they set policy directives for the commission and how they provide services to our community and the communities within the regional planning commission. So the, there are a number of services that they provide, and they're always looking to be responsive to providing additional services. An example would be, we use Stratford Regional Planning Commission to update our housing chapter of the master plan right now. They're the consultant that's working with us to do so. We've used them to update, I forget if it was our emergency operations plan or hazard mitigation plan, but they provide services to the community. Their model, their funding model includes fees from member communities. We pay, I think, about $8,000 a year for the baseline services of the Stratford Regional Planning. And their business model includes a lot of grant funding to pursue initiatives. For example, they just received a grant to develop a, I don't want to say this, like a best practices pathway for electronic vehicle charging stations. And so they published that and made it available to the entire state. Anyways, the governing body, the Stratford Regional Planning Commissioners, are the select board of all of that decision-making and policy directives, where they're going, how they're accomplishing their mission in regional planning.
Our two representatives' roles then are to make recommendations to those commissioners?
They are the commissioners.
So they are the commissioners? And there's 26 of them? Like, this sounds like a really large governing body.
Right. Yes. Yep, and so the, I haven't read the bylaws for the rest of Stratford Regional Planning Commission in a little while. But the membership is, the membership and the dues are based on size and population. And so Barrington is allotted two seats on the Stratford Regional Planning Commission.
And our larger communities allotted more seats than that?
They're represented, they, yes, they're represented more and pay more. I think there might be a maximum. I can certainly research those details and get back to you.
And how do the two representatives that are representing Barrington know what they're messaging and maybe what their focus of goals should be? Like, how does that take place?
That's a great question. So in the past.
Let me have a comment on that. And I have not actually passed this on to Connor, but Mr. Towne did offer to come to the select board.
I'm just interested, like, does the town planner meet with the two individuals and give directives, like?
No. So in the past, it's worked very well to have the Stratford Regional Planning Commissioners serving on the planning board. And that's their connection to, and Steve Diamond, who's the other commissioner, he was previously on the planning board. John Huckins, he was the seat that Matt Towne filled the vacancy for. But as a staff member and a member of the community, that was the other opportunity. So I think your point's well taken that we should bring more cohesiveness to the Stratford Regional Planning Commissioners and the goals of not only the planning board, but also the select board in the town to make sure that they're advocating appropriately for what we identify as, what you all, the planning board, identify as priorities.
So I see nodding of heads, so maybe that's something we can schedule at an upcoming meeting.
I think that'd be great. Yeah, I think that'd be great.
So we need to decide on this.
I'd move to appoint Matthew Towne as a member of Stratford Regional Planning Commission with a term expiring 2027.
Second?
I'll second.
Hardikov, aye.
Gibson, aye.
Mantrick, aye.
Secoshia, no.
Capiello, aye. The motion passes. We will move on to staff reports. Administrator MacGyver?
Thank you. So here we are at our first and only select board meeting in September. And so I'd like to draw your attention to the work anniversaries for September, which are remarkably top-heavy. So Timothy Booty's been in the fire department for 29 years, John Genell for 28 years. Amy Ingles, who is currently in the position of library processor, although she's served a number of positions in the library, including director for a long time, has worked for the town for 27 years. Dana Drake in the highway department for 23 years. Barbara Irvine, our land, our land use administrative assistant, has worked for the town for 20 years. And so there's four departments with employee tenure of over 20 years four departments with employee tenure of over twenty years that continue to provide a tremendous amount of institutional knowledge and value to the town, which is just remarkable. When we think about the backbone of what allows the town to continue to provide the quality of services that we do, at the value, you know, a very lean organization, it's the fact that we have people working for us for twenty, twenty-three, twenty-seven, twenty-eight, twenty-nine years and bringing that to work with them every day. To continue down the list, James Sanger, Jim Sanger has been a transfer station attendant for eight years, J.T. Harmon in the fire department for six years, Sarah Bailey are currently our assistant recreation director for four years, Crystal Murkey, deputy tax collector, and in April, come April, soon to be tax collector for two years, and Eli Strickland, our, I was about to say our newest full-time firefighter, although I'm happy to report that the fire chief has found a young individual to fill the vacancy of our full-time firefighter, so we now have a newer full-time firefighter, but Eli was hired this time last year. And so thank you for the tenure of those employees. Moving on, training opportunities and resources. The budget and finance workshop is tomorrow. UNH is hosting a Beyond Chat GPT, the Opportunity of Artificial Intelligence for Organizations and Communities. I think that's going to be interesting to see where they take that session. Municipal Immunities, what they are, how they work, and why they are important is on September twenty-first. That session is especially focused on, there's been a push at the State House to cut back on the immunities built into state law for municipalities and for law enforcement, and so this is an education session to understand what they are, why they're important. And so if you're looking for talking points on combating the attempt to strip municipal immunities, that'd be a good place to start.
Is that, is that NH, NA?
Correct. Yes. BEA and OPD have a webinar, Recipe for CIP, How to Start and Utilize a Capital Improvement Program. I'll remind you that on October second, we're going to be presented with a draft of the CIP and focus on funding those capital projects. It's a planning board document, but the cooperation of the select board is very important, as the select board is the funding arm for these types of things. ZBA Basics webinar on September twenty-eighth. October fourth, the Hard Road to Travel Workshop. This is all things roads. On October twelfth, there's a right-to-know law for public meetings and governmental records. And then I included a link as a resource to the, a review of the changes in planning and zoning laws in two thousand twenty-three, a guide for municipalities, if you're so interested. Moving on, as I just mentioned, on October second, we're going to focus the majority of that meeting, very much the large majority of that meeting, on our capital projects, the CIP, how we're going to fund the capital projects, and this is a big takeaway from our strategic planning session in figuring out how we approach some of these bigger ticket items that we have coming up. So I have a short list here. The library, which we've talked about tonight, the public safety building, which we've talked about, and the current plan is to go for design money on a Warren article this year, a community center. What are we going to do with the vacated space at the recreation facility? How are we going to make a municipal presence in the town center, maybe even in addition to this proposed library? Property in Barrington's town center, dam repairs, bridge and culverts, road reconstruction. So we'll be talking about all that and starting to put a plan together for funding. The CIP will advise us of, these are the priority projects, these are how much they cost. It will be our responsibility to look at that and figure out how we want to either change those priorities and/or start a funding plan for them. In some cases, continue a funding plan. The master plan survey, the housing chapter is still active, and I'll put a plug for the housing forum, which is September thirtieth from eight-thirty in the morning till twelve noon at the Early Childhood Learning Center. And then the pay plan step allowance and cost of living adjustment. So again, not looking for a decision by the select board tonight, but giving you advance notice that the budget committee is looking for the select board to make a decision in October about a pay plan step allowance and any cost of living adjustment, so that we know those values going through the budget process. There's two additional documents, and I included them in your packet tonight, based on requests from the select board. First, a cost of living adjustment methodology. Members who have been on the select board for a couple of years have seen a version of this before, but this basically takes and uses publicly available data to make data-driven decisions relative to cost of living. The four data points are three CPI data, the New England, the Northeast, and the Boston, Cambridge, Newton data. All those regions include Barrington and Stratford County. And then fourth, the social security cost of living adjustment. They base theirs largely on CPI, but they take other data into effect as well. And I included with that methodology just a snapshot of the data as it exists right now. So this is only eleven months of data. We're waiting for one more month of data point to come forward, but what you'll see on this data is that for the three CPI data sources, the current change in the value of the dollar since our pay plan was last updated in September of two thousand twenty-two is two-point-two-one percent, one-point-seven-nine percent, and one-point-eight-seven percent. And so when we have our August data points, we'll get those in, get that data to you, and you'll be able to use that to make any decisions. Please.
What's the actual average percentage on the step plans? So.
Yes.
Based on years.
Two-point-five percent.
So two-point-five. Thank you.
Two-point-five percent across the board for the town pay plan, so that has a twelve or thirteen, gosh, I'm blanking. It's either twelve or thirteen steps. Sorry, I don't know exactly right now. And the calculated range spread is about thirty-five percent across those steps. The union pay plan is a consolidated pay plan of nine steps, has the same calculated range spread but over nine steps, and so their average increase between steps is three and a half or three and a quarter percent.
Are we still doing hiring bonuses or any retention bonuses based on the ARPA funds that were approved?
We are. So both the police department and the fire department have active bonuses of different structures depending on certification and commitment to a term of service. And so I can get you those specific details, but those are still active.
Thank you.
Absolutely. So the second piece of information you have in your packet, and again is available attached to my town administrator report, is a historical view back to two thousand eighteen of our payroll costs, the percent wage increase experienced by employees, and the FTE count for the town. And so I included these details through two thousand twenty-three. Just a couple of notes first. I included the budgeted payroll costs. Aggregating this data gave me the opportunity to compare our budgeted payroll costs with our actual payroll costs, and over those six years, or over the five completed years, I should say, the average deviance, deviance, no.
Bad choice.
The average deviation. Yeah, hey, thank you. Couldn't, couldn't get past that one. Okay, the average deviation of the.
What's matter?
Actual, they do, they do. Of the actual expenditures is seven percent. So on average, the amount we budget for wages and benefits is seven percent more than what we spend. Largely, this is based on vacancies throughout the year. So we budget for every position being filled for all three hundred and sixty-five days. In various departments, we have vacancies and, and ongoing vacancies. Anyways, that, those are the numbers that you see. You see the budgeted numbers, not the expenditure numbers. The percent wage increase, this is the average change for the majority of employees that are eligible for wage increases, and these are implemented in April. The reason that's worded that way is we've done two wage adjustments where we've reset the pay plan, and so individual employees experienced a wider variety of individual actual wage increases, and so in two thousand twenty and two thousand twenty-three, you'll see it was eight-point-seven-seven percent and eight percent. That was the average across all employees, but there was more of a spread there. In the other years where it was just a step or a step and a cost of living, there was more consistency across all employees. And then finally, the full-time equivalents, this is calculated based on the number of hours we have budgeted, so this picks up the small hour changes where we took an employee from thirty and brought him to thirty-four hours, and also the big changes where we create an entirely new position. And so there's been movement up and down as we've consolidated positions and added positions, but you'll notice it's relatively constant through two thousand twenty-one. And then in two thousand twenty-two, we added a police officer, a firefighter, and the working form position in the highway department, which is now filled by just a crew member, but another warm body. And then in two thousand twenty-three, we added the facility manager, firefighter, and library processor was brought to, for additional hours. So here's another call. If you have, a lot of times you see data, it leads to additional questions. If you have additional questions or would like to see additional data, let me know. There's still plenty of time to pull that together ahead of hopefully making a decision in March. Any thoughts or questions at the moment? Great. So town center lot for sale and TIF district revaluation. Just a brief update here, there's been a lot of good movement behind the scenes to include the focus on the library, but focusing on the town center and that one lot, the thirteen acres that we've talked about every meeting for a couple of months now. We've engaged the services of TF Moran to help us update a visual representation of our vision for the town center. So this will show existing conditions, the properties that are under conditional approval or under construction. They'll also perform an analysis of needs for the community, whether it's commercial uses or recreational and open space uses. And so we'll have the recreation department talking with these folks and saying, hey, this is what we're hearing from the community. We'd like to see a pavilion that looks like this. And this will be a tool for us to not only look at the individual lots, but also when we go to voters in March to potentially bring them another TIF district, to show them, this is what we would do, this is what we would accomplish, whether it's transportation improvements, recreational improvements, civic or you, civic use or open space. And so I'll continue to keep you posted. That process will produce drafts that will come before the select board to get feedback, and we'll try to get feedback from the community as well. So stay tuned on that. Exemption and credit changes for the two thousand twenty-four warrant. So I'm starting this conversation a little bit earlier than we do every year, simply because we talked a lot about assessed values and our revaluation this year. So every year in October since two thousand eighteen, we have brought the select board a, an exemption and credit analysis. And I've just linked in here, I didn't provide you a printed copy right now, last year's version, the two thousand twenty-two exemption and credit analysis. And this does two main things for us. First, it shows us what impact our current utilization of exemption and credits has on our tax base and the taxes, the tax burden that is redistributed out to other taxpayers. And two, it shows us where our exemptions and credits stack up to the county and the state. And so the reason I bring this up now is because exemptions especially exempt a certain dollar amount. So you have an elderly exemption, and you're this old, a hundred and fifteen thousand dollars of value is exempted from your property that you don't pay taxes on. So as we wholesale increase values, the proportional share that an exemption covers is diminished. And so one logical way to look at it is as we're bringing values up, an average of thirty percent, we should consider bringing the value of exemptions up thirty percent to ensure that it covers the same amount of property. Now, that's not a recommendation, that's not suggesting that you do, but I want you to be thinking about it, because we haven't, since I've been here, so since two thousand eighteen, we haven't adjusted the dollar amount of exemptions. We've adjusted the income and asset limits for qualifying for exemptions, right? You're only allowed to have so much money in the bank, you're only allowed to own so much property, but we haven't changed the dollar amount. The, when I started in Barrington, the total assessed value was under a billion dollars. With this revaluation, that is bringing an additional four hundred and forty-one million dollars of value, will be over two billion dollars. So values have doubled since, in the past five years. So I'm not suggesting that we double the exemption value. That would have a, a large impact on redistributing the property tax value to other taxpayers, but we ought to look at that. When the report comes out of two thousand twenty-three exemptions and credits, we ought to look at those values and think about what changes we might want to recommend to voters in March. Please.
I think one piece of information that would be helpful, at least for me, if we can see property type, this many single-family homes have this many exemptions, this many mobile homes have this many elderly exemptions. Without that breakdown, I don't know that I'd be able to make a really comprehensive decision.
I understand.
Okay.
So I will add, I'll work to add to the exemption and credit analysis, a review of exemptions per property type. So right now, we just say that there are two hundred elderly exemptions. That will, we'll work to break that out to say, there are two hundred, a hundred and fifty are on a single-family homes, twenty-five are on single-wide mobile homes, ten are on double-wide mobile homes, something like that. Okay? I'll work on that. And the, again, this would go before voters, and so this is something that we would propose to voters in March. And the other thing that we can think about is making incremental changes. So if our goal is to get to a certain value level, it might not be the best approach to make that wholesale change in one year. So like we did with the disabled veteran credit and the veteran credit, we incrementally change that over years. So the select board could look and say, hey, maybe we want, maybe we want to double the exemption value or the exemptions that we offer, but maybe we want to do that over five years. And so every year for five years, residents will see an incremental increase in those exemption values. The importance of having this conversation and talking about this like we are now is we will be able to talk about this hand in hand when we talk to residents about the changes in their values, right? So when you're standing at the election and folks are voting on our budget that has a, you know, sizable increase, and they're looking at their tax bill that maybe also had a sizable increase, we're able to explain to them that there is help for those most vulnerable residents, whether it be the elderly or the disabled, that have, that we have exemptions in place, and we're working on increasing those to make sure that it covers the added costs that they have because of that. So we'll, you know, continue to develop those talking points. Right. Yeah, so those are at their maximums now.
We're max now.
And so we did that. Was it three or four years, Tracy? I know because, over three years?
It was three years.
So those, and those details, as we, as we refine our goals and how we want to approach that, we can also develop messaging that, that speaks to it. So the, the two thousand twenty-three exemption and credit analysis is typically available like middle of October. We have to wait for the state to release the aggregated data, so then we can analyze it. And so I would target maybe the second or third meeting in October where we'll have that presentation and focus on it. But if, I got your note down here, Tracy, but if there are other pieces of information you think might be valuable to consider, let it, let me know now. We can start working on it. But the more warrant articles that we get kind of decided early on, the more we can focus on other things, because we have a lot of irons in the fire going into town meeting this year, so.
Trouble with the progressive tax system.
You said it, not me.
I know.
I just said, it's not our fault, it's the state's fault, you know, so. It's not based on services, it's based on, okay. Employee and volunteer appreciation program, just an update from our last meeting. So we talked about this. One of the things that I suggested that we would do, and we have done, is we've taken our employee appreciation event, which we've held for the last couple of years at DeMarit Hill Farm, where we invite our employees to come, bring their families, go apple picking. We have crafts and raffle forum. We've invited all of our volunteers. So every member of a board committee, commission, elected or appointed, is welcome to come, welcome to bring their families, including the select board as well. And so RSVP by the thirteenth to Amy, details about that. Please, Danan.
What time?
Eleven to two. And you don't have to be there the whole time. Come and go as you please, and we'll have grills there. We'll be grilling hamburgers and hot dogs for employees and volunteers as well. One of the other things that we did, and we just launched the first effort of this today, actually, is we sent out, and this was a suggestion from one of our zoning board members at the last select board meeting, hey, why don't you profile the volunteers that exist in the community to help people understand that volunteers or anybody, you know, don't feel like you have to be, have lived in town for a certain amount of time or have certain qualifications to get involved and. you know, don't feel like you have to be, have lived in town for a certain amount of time or have certain qualifications to get involved and be a part of your community. So we sent out to everybody that's been involved, that's everybody that's involved in town right now, a questionnaire that they can fill out and provide details about their volunteer service so that we can create profiles for them on the website and social media. And we'll get some printed up, put in the town hall to not only highlight our resident volunteers, but also encourage additional volunteerism. So our first profile was on Jack Gale, who is a great place to start because he's very involved. He's a relatively newer resident, he's been here for about five years. And so you'll see that on our social media page right now. And we'll continue with those efforts. Still working on the shirt design to bring back a draft to the board. My most excited aspect of this program. Fire Department Administrative Assistant. So this again is a, something that we've talked about, but not looking for discussion tonight, but I want you all thinking about this to see if you have questions and we can crunch numbers and do some additional research. So we've talked about in the succession management plan for the fire department, the need for administrative support. And so at the October 2nd meeting, we expect to have a conversation with the select board about a plan to authorize the hire of that position this year and build it in for 12 months in next year's budget. By September 20th, so in just over a week, we'll have that packet that the fire chief's going to put together for you with all the backup documentation, the draft of the job description and the anticipated costs, the source, the budget source for those costs in this year's budget and how that will shift the operations in the department. So you can start thinking about it, give you more of an opportunity to ask questions. And so if you have thoughts or would like to see certain analysis, please let us know. You can let me or the fire chief know. And then after September 20th, once you have that initial packet, if that generates questions, let us know. We can build it into the select board packet. And this is really the only regular agenda item that we anticipate talking about on October 2nd. The rest is really going to be focused on the CIP and the capital projects. So that's the plug, get you thinking about it. Happy to address any questions right now, but certainly follow up.
So Administrator Cottle is not here, but I think there were documents being passed around. Make sure that Chance DeSonn knows before you leave tonight.
Awesome.
All right. Old business, we have none tonight. New business, fire and police. Which has been attached. Do you have any speakers to this?
Haven't we just, haven't we really discussed this? Didn't we hear about this before, didn't you? Or am I just imagining, I've read that somewhere?
We've talked.
This, this policy, I thought we discussed at some point.
Yeah, I think we talked about, and I'm just going off recollection. I don't, I don't think the select board has made a policy change. But what we talked about in transitioning to a 24 hour schedule in the fire department is the need to backfill positions. So the select board sets as a policy position, a level of service. We want two people available to respond to emergencies 24/7. Same thing in the police department. We work towards this, we increase staffing to accomplish this. What this policy does is work to incentivize and ensure that those vacancies that create in that, that are created in that level of service are filled. So the, what the policy says specifically is that if you take a day off on a scheduled, a week where you're scheduled to work and you're asked to fill a shift later in that week, that that additional shift that you pick up is paid at overtime, not at straight time. And so again, the effort, the goal is to incentivize the backfilling of shifts because we operate our police department, our fire department as shift coverage, where we maintain a level of service by having two people on. And so the biggest challenge in both the police department and fire department is getting shifts covered on the weekends and getting people to give up a weekend to come in and cover a shift. And if they've taken a vacation day earlier in the week, maybe they're at the end of a vacation or maybe they were sick. But if they didn't work, they come forward and they're proposed, hey, come in on Saturday and work for us. The incentive structure of being paid at straight time hasn't proved to be there. So the only other thing that I'll add is in our highway department, our personnel policy exists as it exists right now, says that for holidays, the highway department, holidays count towards time worked for the purposes of overtime. So if, you know, Thanksgiving on a Thursday and then it snows on a Saturday, when they come in, when they're called back to work on a Saturday after Thanksgiving, those hours they're working is paid at overtime, they're not working the first eight hours at straight time. So it's a similar concept, but a different department, different purpose. Police, police and fire have holiday pay, so there, if they're scheduled to work on a holiday, they work a holiday. The fire department is paid one, and some, 1.8 hours a week, which is eight hours of 12 holidays. And you'll remember from the last union contract, we adjusted the police department holiday pay structure. They're paid twice a year and they're paid for 12 holidays, but now at 10 hours instead of eight hours. So it's 120 hours split twice a year.
So the state labor laws and the Fair Labor Standards Act at the federal level certainly would allow you to compensate employees at a level that is higher than what the law allows. In looking at this, have we considered, instead of looking at the overtime of this, doing a weekend stipend for all hours, all non-scheduled hours that are open and available so that every employee is being compensated giving up their weekends with their families at the same level? And you're not trying to create in your payroll system, which I'm reading this and thinking the programming of this would get really interesting. Have we considered that stipend?
Yeah, it's a great point. I'll just speak to the last point really quick because I know Rick won't, won't speak to this part of it. Our payroll system has earning items and we actually already had to program the ability to have a manual overtime item. Because of the 24 hour schedules, there are some weeks that an employee in the fire department will work 24 hours and their 25th hour is overtime. Because on a eight week schedule, they work six 48 hour weeks and two 24 hour weeks. Any, in those two 24 hour weeks, any time worked in addition to 24 hours per Fair Labor Standards is overtime. And so that manual overtime item is already programmed into the system. That's not a heavy lift. That doesn't, you don't need to base your policy decision based on that, I just wanted you to know. But I'll let Rick speak to the.
We, we do have, I think it's on. We do have a, a weekend stipend, it's a dollar an hour. We did not take that away when we went to 24 hour shift coverage because we felt that it was such a small amount of money. And the amount of morale that you would lose by taking away really wasn't worth it. So the town administrator convinced me to leave it in there. The issue is, I think it's important to understand the way the labor market works right now. I interviewed two potential hires in six months, I've had an open position. Two people came to me and applied. Both of them were interviewing me to see what the town of Barrington had for them. 10 years ago, it was exactly the opposite. We would have 15 to 20 applications and we had the luxury, the town had the luxury for the cities, whatever, had the luxury of going through them application and picking the best person that would fit the needs of the fire or police department. Now, it's the other way around. I had a candidate came in a month ago, showed him everything. He said, chief, thank you very much. You're one of 10 places I've applied for. He says, I will interview at all 10 locations and I will pick what's best for me. Thank you very much. That's what we're up against today. I'm guardily optimistic that the individual I met with a week or so ago, that we're going to be able to put this to bed. The point is, the reason I come forward with this, years ago, they came back and said, for the highway department, that, look, you, you have a, you have a Monday holiday, President's Day, whatever, Civil Rights Day, whatever, these days that some of us don't care whether we work or not, they're a town holiday and the people had no choice. We're not working, you, you have to take day off. It snows on Saturday, you gotta work the first eight hours, you gotta plow snow for the first eight hours before you start to collect overtime because the policy is, is that you haven't worked your 40 hours. That became a problem within the highway department of people saying, why do I want to come in and plow snow for straight time because I was forced to take a day off earlier in the week? So the select board saw the merit of this and said, okay, we're gonna, we're going to create that eight hour window of a holiday for the highway department. And it was the only department that it was offered to, to say, we're going to treat this time work so you can get your overtime. In the, when you look at the system that we work in, our people, and this has been vetted by the Department of Labor and Fair Labor Standards Act federally and state, our people, as Khan pointed out to you, we work a two day, a 24 hour shift, they have two days off, they work a 24 hour shift and they have four days off. So in an eight week cycle, that average is out to be 42 hours a week. They, they do work two weeks of just 24 hours and they work six weeks of 48 hours. They're paid for 42 hours because they're going to take a six hour block and move it over to the week that they only work 24 hours so that they get their pay. So the Fair Labor Standards Act says that because this is the way we're going to allow you to pay you. And truthfully, a lot of it is, is because a lot of the federal installations and stuff work on schedules similar to this. But, so any hours not work, I mean, any hours worked outside of their scheduled time is overtime. So like, I had a guy come in, he had to come in at 6 o'clock one day last week, his normal shift starts at 7. So he got an hour's overtime from 6:00 AM to 7:00 AM. And then at 7:00 AM, he went on to his regular 24 hour schedule and had he stayed later on the other end to finish up the call or something, he would have gone to overtime then, regardless of the hours he's worked. So the issue came up was a few weeks ago, I had one of my individuals that took two days off, two scheduled shifts off because he went with his family on vacation. One was in one week, one was the beginning of the next pay cycle. It turned out I had a Saturday open for overtime. He offered to take the shift. So I gave him the shift, assuming that I was still following the fact that that was not his regularly scheduled shift and that he should be paid time and a half for it. It was brought to my attention immediately that that's not, well, after I had signed the timesheet, it was brought to my attention that that's not the way the policy is, he hadn't worked his hours, so he wasn't entitled to that time. So that's when, that created an issue with the only person that a department head can force to work overtime, myself or the police chief, is the individual that's getting ready to go off shift. If I have him here, him or her here, I can force them to stay. But I can't call him at home and say, you have to come to work today. Plain and simple. So if, if we're not allowed, if that shift is there and I get an individual that would take it, but he goes, I'm not going to take it because I had to shift off early in the weekend, I gotta do this for straight time. It, it creates a problem because, you know, it's just, it's tough right now. And I'm not complaining about this, but I worked a 12 hour shift on the Saturday of Labor Day weekend because it was important to make sure that my people that earned their time off and were not scheduled to work and tried to do things for their families were able to do that. So what that meant was, I came in and worked a 12 hour shift. I'm not complaining about it. But, you know, the, the, the point is, I'll, I'll, I'll do what I can to make sure that we're meeting the needs of the citizen, but, the citizenry of the town, but it makes it tougher because in this particular case, the way the policy is.
Chief Walker, can you talk about the budgetary impact of this?
So the, the budgetary impact is not any different than, I mean, I, my overtime line is way overspent. Overtime is, is going to be a big deal because we don't have, I currently have three or four people that will pick up a 12 hour shift. I'm struggling to do that. I, I'm not able to cover two people in the station, 24 hours a day, seven days a week. I just don't have the part-time people to do that. I, I'm fortunate, I have two or three people from Rochester that are willing to pick up a shift here or there, but they're, they're working 48 hours a week. If that's how they're scheduled work, it makes it tough to come to Barrington and pick up a shift. So the, the, the economy is such that when, we don't have people beating the doors down, wanting to take on part-time jobs. So it really, I'm able to cover some of the night shifts at night with on-call people or I do it myself. I cover, I, I don't mind covering on-call at night because I'm old and I don't usually do much, so I'll jump in my car and come back. That's okay, but that's not sustainable for the town. Because when I leave in a year, there's no guarantee that the person coming in behind me is going to, going to work the hours that I do. And so I have an obligation as the department head right now to try to, to fill these holes before I leave so that you don't have a fire chief coming in here and standing up here and going, that jackass you just got rid of, didn't have all these shifts covered, so.
If I can, I don't know if this, if that answered your question, if you're looking for something more or different. But two things that come to mind, we talk about budgetary impacts. First, the current budget, Rick's mentioned that the current overtime budget is overspent. That is offset almost equally with the surplus in the full-time wages line because we've had vacancies. We've had vacancies, we've paid overtime. So I don't expect, I don't think Rick expects that his entire budget overall will be overspent, but the overtime overspent, other one underspent. The second point about future budgetary impacts, so my big question is to both Rick and George, is how often does this happen? And Rick, and he can add to it if he needs to, but Rick said, hey, listen, we switched to 24 hour schedules in April and the first time this has happened was two weeks ago, three weeks ago. So it, I don't think it's an occurrence that happens frequently, but it sounds like it's impactful when it does happen. George and I were talking about it today and I think you said a dozen times a year, but I'd let you speak to it anyway.
Yeah, I think that would be a good estimate. So like, Rick, our schedules, do you mind if I come up at the same time? So we're an either or end of the week. So I have a beginning of the week shift and an end of the week shift. What you're talking about is kind of the perfect storm scenario for me, where I have Officer A who either calls out sick, has an appointment or whatever on the early end of the week, because obviously my early end of the week folks are the ones that are available on the far end of the week. That individual has whatever going on Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, has taken a day. And now I have a situation where I have a Saturday night shift open. It doesn't really do this person any good to fill in this night shift for me. Now, are they going to do it? Honestly, a lot of times they will, but it's begrudgingly and I normally have to poke and prod and say, hey, you know, it's either you or me and I'm 47 years old and I don't want to do this anymore. So that's, it's kind of the perfect storm in those worlds. It doesn't happen often. Like I told TA 10, a dozen times throughout the course of the year maybe, no budget impact in reality because my overtime's budgeted at the beginning of the year. So I'm going to work with that there. So it really doesn't have an impact, it just allows me, another tool to fill those shifts easier in the long run.
So my, my quick question though is, if you made a stipend of $18 to $20 per hour for those weekend open shifts, which is probably close to the equivalent of their halftime that you're paying them. So basically amounting to time and a half. It would also offer you the opportunity to bring in those part-time employees who potentially maybe would never see that overtime and open up your pool of candidates to cover those. And open up your pool of candidates to cover those shifts, wouldn't it?
Yeah, in the end, for me at least, overtime, significant stipend. I, I don't know how it's best appropriately handled from a labor standpoint.
Them earn, neither of those types of earnings are boosting the retirement costs to the town, correct?
Correct, with the, with the very slight exception of those people that were vested by two thousand and eleven. And so we have nobody in the fire department, and
I'm last man standing and I'm a relative.
George doesn't get overtime, so.
Okay, but I'm, I'm just wondering if that's a, but is that a more workable approach for you in order to attract people to cover those shifts?
I don't think so at this point, only because I don't have the depth of part-time staff.
Okay.
Staffing available, and, and it's important to understand that I did do my homework first. And I contacted communities around us, both small and large. And every one of them, to a fault, that I talked to said, this is how we do it. We don't care if they take a vacation day, they get time and a half, they come in to cover a shift. So, um, you know, I'm just trying to have an extra tool in the toolbox. I, again, I'm probably like Chief Joy. In reality, if it happened once a month, I think that would be a big, bigger stretch, but.
Into the, this isn't always happening on weekends either. And I guess that's, we always talk about Saturdays and Sundays, cause weekends are the, weekends in my world and in the chief's world aren't as, they don't matter as much because we're working them anyway. This could for me very well be a Tuesday night. I, it could be a Thursday night. Yes, ma'am, to your point, that would help on the weekends. But if it happened to be a Thursday night, or, so Wednesday is what I call my flex night, and nobody gets that until you sit down and look at my schedule. I'm either really heavy or really light. Um, if I have a really ni- really light Wednesday and my Wednesday person calls out or whatever, now I'm in the mid- dead center of the week. And I gotta fill that, and I have to fill that. And it could be from either end now that I've got my late-week guys, my early-week folks. So for me, it could happen any night, it's not necessarily going to be a weekend, unfortunately. Those are the ones that hurt the most, cause asking, asking a twenty-something-year-old young person to give up a Saturday night if they're already off Saturday night, they've made plans, they've got fiancés, they've got brand-new children, et cetera, et cetera. But it could as well be a Tuesday or Wednesday.
And, and from a weekend perspective, the way that, the way the schedule works is they're gonna, they're gonna work, if they work Saturday this week, or if they work Friday this week, Friday, seven AM to seven AM Saturday, lost their Friday night. Next week, they're gonna lose their Saturday night. Week after that, they're gonna lose their Sunday. And then depending on, if they're on the two-week cycle, they're only gonna get one weekend, one complete weekend off, and then they start the process again. And then, then when they get over to their deep, the four-days part of the side of the cycle, then it stretches out that they actually do get one short and then three days off. So we're the same way. They, they end up working on average every other week, or they, you know, one weekend a month, they get the weekend off. So to ask one of them to, hey, you wanna give up part of that, to come in and work, and.
Dan, do you have a comment or a question?
I do. Um, it, it, I really appreciate the recruiting problem, and I think that's a big issue. But I think a bigger issue here perhaps is the fairness to these important employees. Uh, it's not easy to, and I've, I've worked in twenty-four-hour shift business. Um, worked in seven days at a time, several months at a time. But it's not easy to, uh, to do twenty-four-hour shifts and then be asked to do something else. And because you choose to take the time that you're authorized to take for whatever you're authorized to take, uh, appointments and that sort of thing, then to put a penalty on if, if you take up an extra shift, I don't think that's quite fair. So I think this probably is a good idea of a policy.
So that was, to mirror that, that was a point I brought up with the TA today when we were talking. And again, I'm gonna use my far end, early end. If I have an employee who, it's, it's, that employee's long week, for argument's sake, so they're working Wednesday. And Wednesday, they wake up in the morning and just feel like garbage. Not quite bad enough that a hundred percent they're gonna take the day off, but they feel like garbage. That employee has already taken, for argument's sake, an overtime shift that was posted Saturday night. Now that employee has a decision to make. If I take today off, that Saturday shift I took is now straight time. So A, do I, I, I know George Joy's answer. George Joy's going into work a hundred percent of the time, feeling like garbage or not. I'm going into work, a hundred and three-degree free, I'm going into work, so I'm not giving up my OT at the end of the week. Now, I'm gonna go in, I'm gonna potentially contaminate my coworkers. I'm not at my full function, so I'm putting myself in danger. And I'm not really serving the public in the manner that I should be because I'm not at a hundred percent. But I did it so I don't lose my OT at the end of the week. I know what a lot of my folks are gonna choose to do in that situation, and they're not gonna give up their overtime. Or they're gonna bang out Wednesday because they're sick, and then that Saturday night shift that they filled may not be. So to your point, you're absolutely correct, you're penalizing them for taking the time off that they've, that they've earned.
Are we ready to entertain a motion?
Especially if you're old, an old, old man at forty-seven, I, real shock. Yeah, wow.
So we brought it forward for discussion. Certainly, the Select Board doesn't have to make a decision tonight, um, uh, up to you for sure.
So the only thing I'll say from an HR perspective is that once you've given something in the way of compensation, don't ever expect that you will reverse that course of action because it's a huge takeaway. So I think being really mindful of this is important. Um, I grinned at the fire chief, cause I obviously spent most of my marriage with these forty-eight-hour shifts and fire service. Um, sometimes it makes for a really good marriage. I hope my husband's not watching right now. Um, but I do agree with the fire chief, we are in a completely different world. And I agree with the police chief that we are in a completely different world. And until all of a sudden, there's an onslaught of twenty, thirty, forty-year-olds that are going into public service for fire departments and police departments, we need to do something to appropriately compensate them.
Didn't we in the last year or so do something to adjust or improve, hopefully comp time too? Has that gone into effect and working well, or has anything like that been effective?
Yeah, that's a good question. So what we did is we expanded the comp time program from the police department to include the fire department for the same purpose of the overtime policy that you have here, to give flexibility in, um, having, getting time on the books in lieu of overtime. And that is a neutral decision, so an employee can't make that decision on their own, the police or fire chief can't make that decision on their own. But that's another tool. To your point about how well it's working, I don't know how much the fire department employees have taken advantage of that availability. Getting, I'm getting a head shake that it wasn't a really valuable tool, but the, the tool availability exists. I think it's more utilized, it can, it's continued to be utilized in the police department, or Chief Joy, the comp time program.
Primarily by employees that are speeding.
Feel like probably most of the board is. Okay, let's do it.
Well, I didn't present it as a, as a vote, so I would say, um, I would say make a motion to authorize the policy change relative to providing overtime for shift coverage in the police and fire departments. So moved would be sufficient.
Move.
Moved and seconded, okay, roll call.
Hard to cough, aye.
Give us an aye.
Man, sure, aye.
So, coach, aye.
Kathy, aye, aye. Been moved and passed.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, let's see, moving along to Select Board member reports and concerns.
Let's see, we did not have, this is the first time in eighteen months, we did not have a zoning board meeting.
You didn't have anything on your agenda?
There was nothing on the agenda, it was kind of a thrilling month. Um, the, uh, however, there's plenty of work to do with the housing master plan and getting people to participate. I'm happy to report that as a community with about ten thousand people, we're performing at a very, even though it doesn't seem like a lot, we've had three, over three hundred surveys now returned, completed. And, um, that is a higher percentage-wise than, uh, a community very close by, that is about twenty percent bigger than us, but it, they mailed the surveys directly to every single home. And they have only seventy-five percent of the participatory rate that we have. So we're getting some really great participation in people's opinions of what they would like to see for housing in the town of Barrington.
And there will be an upcoming meeting on September thirtieth the morning for residents who would like to come and be able to talk about this in more small group work. We encourage people to come.
I think for some people who have, um, maybe some barriers to utilizing technology, that's a huge opportunity for them to share really important perspective.
Do you have any report?
Uh, Conservation Commission met on August twenty-fourth. Um, I was out of town for that meeting. They did review some of the plans that were before the planning board, I've not seen minutes come out yet for that. Um, the Energy Committee met on August seventeenth. And Henry Herndon from CP, CNH was there and, and, uh, the, the Energy Committee on the seventeenth and then this past Thursday on the seventh, um, have really been focusing on the Community Power Aggregate Coalition and getting ready to present that, uh, as a warrant for the, uh, citizens of Barrington. And September sixth, the Library Building Committee met, and, uh, Susan already gave us an update on that.
Uh, Library, Susan gave my report, uh, pretty much on the, the library and, um, was not much else discussed at that meeting. Transfer Station met on the twenty-eighth. Uh, you saw the document, we spent a lot of time talking about the document that was on the consent agenda uh, concerning a feasibility study, uh, for improvements to Transfer Station. Kind of FYI, there've been some small changes, or significant changes, uh, made in the current structure. We probably will end up having to spend some money to replace the fence along Brewster Road, which, um, will have to be improved to meet, uh, federal standards. Um, and we talked about improvements to the MSW building. The, uh, School Board, uh, met last Tuesday. Two interesting, let's see, the total K to eighth total was, uh, on that date was nine hundred and fifteen, which was more or less the same as last year. There were some issues about transportation, they're one bus short, cause there's not enough drivers, although they anticipate there will be in the next month or two. Uh, those, I think largely worked out, uh, they're working on them. And, um, they also discussed, uh, the hundred and thirty-three thousand dollars plus or minus for the state adequacy fund to make our incredibly inadequate state support of constitutional support of education only marginally less inadequate, but they have to play with whole hundred and thirty-three thousand dollars.
Joyce, can I ask a question about that? So the, uh, school district sent us a notice to post for residents, um, calling for a special school district meeting to, uh, relative to that hundred and thirty, or the additional adequacy aid. And so it wasn't clear in the notice if that was a school district meeting, like another school-town meeting, like a special meeting?
Yeah, it is. Uh, it's a special town meeting because they have to approve the, there are two choices, you cannot accept the money, and it just takes money off your tax bills. Or you have to accept it. And so they're kind of rushing to do this because it has to be done sometime in October. And then they'll come back to the School Board, and that'll go forward.
But this is only about the hundred and thirty-three?
It's only about the hundred and thirty-three thousand, plus or minus.
And are they, and, and is there a ballot vote? I mean, they're SB two, just like we are, so there would have to be a ballot vote. And that, I don't think the town clerk knows anything about that.
I don't, I don't know that either. I, they seemed to think that was, this meeting would be adequate to, to make a vote on it.
I'll do some research report back if I hear anything different or, or otherwise. Uh, interesting, thank you for those details.
Yeah, it's, uh, just say, take it where you can.
Right.
Your own. Oh, A, ABC will meet in October, sorry. Now, now go. Yeah, just see if you're alert.
Class six, private roads committee, um, they're working on and finalizing definitions. Um, they're also working on a potential list of roads that, uh, maybe shouldn't be built on. Um, also, they, they've gone into good detail, and, uh, I'm happy it's gone this way, but a, a separation of projects. Meaning, for instance, if, uh, you know, somebody down there, uh, on one of the roads wants to lift their house and put a foundation underneath, what we have to be mindful of is maybe that person or individual is like, hey, you know, nobody's gonna be down here, it's gonna be storage, and so on, so forth. We can't think of just that person, but we have to think about the sale afterwards of somebody else moving in. And the potential for that to become extra living space, which would add to the traffic going down the roads. Um.
That's the issue around volume, that's come up.
Right, and I, I think we're getting away from using volume and doing living space because, you know, it could be somebody, you know, putting in a new stairwell, or somebody doing a deck, or a, a whole re-roof where they would need a major building permit. But necessarily, that's not gonna add any traffic to the road. Um, hopefully, they will be finishing up soon and bring something and present it to the board. Um, I'd get excited, though. Uh, Technology Committee, uh, meeting tomorrow. Um, recommendations of network improvements, um, they had reached out to a company, those proposals are in. And tomorrow in the meeting, I'm sure that'll kind of get finalized, and that'll be brought to the board as well. Rec Department, um, I hope all of you have had a chance to get to one of the summer concert series, um, that's happened. Uh, I think it's really great for the town, fireworks, everything, I had COVID during then, so I couldn't go. Um, but I, I've made it to two couples, so, um.
I made it to three.
Yeah.
Winner.
Yeah.
Really, really great community event.
Yeah, and it was nice to see everybody from all ages enjoying it. Um, Retro Night, this Friday night, Barrington Elementary School, five-thirty to seven. Uh, pizza and water will be for sale. And people bring scooters, bikes, everything, and it is a big parking lot party. Um, everybody cranking around, really good time. Also, the Fall Festival is October twenty-third. And more exciting news is they pick up their van on Thursday.
Twenty-first.
Twenty-first.
Oh, twenty-first.
Yes.
They will pick up the van on Thursday, and then that'll be in motion, and that's all I have.
Wreck it Ralph.
Wreck it Ralph?
You know, and we tried desperately to get a vanity government plate. So like, government plates start with G, and then it's usually numbers, unless you're the police department, it's NP, and then whatever they want, you know? So we tried to get, we tried to get G Ralph. Um, they don't, they wouldn't do it, they wouldn't go for that, no, no. We, we tried, we tried, we tried really hard. I know. So we're gonna have to settle for a really awesome name decal and logo. And we're getting the Highway Department dump truck lettered at the same time. And so there's gonna be a, a grand unveiling of the Wreck it Ralph van, the Bulldog Dump Truck. And then starting in October, you can register your dogs for next year. And so we have blue, thank you, blue dog tags, and so we'll do a big, uh, big profile on that, so. Exciting stuff. The most important stuff.
Right, yeah. That's a bolt, you know?
And my report from Planning Board is this is sort of last call for new zoning ordinances. So anyone once is not happy with wording of anything we've got going on, it should come to Planning Board at the next meeting next Tuesday. And there'll be at least one more, new one. So I think we're finished with that, let's go to public comment. Is there anyone in, uh, the room that wants to, uh, make any comment? Let's go online. Is there anyone online who would like to make a public comment? Looks like not. Um, I'm not aware that we have any need for public, non-public. Um, I'm not aware that we have any need for public, non-public.
We don't, but I do need to have the select board make one clarification. So, the consent agenda is a unanimous consent agenda. Um, Jim, you voted present, which makes it not unanimous. Um, you can either vote for it. Um, you're able to vote on minutes that you weren't present for, if you don't know if there are any issues. Or you can recuse yourself, and then it would be four votes out of four, it would remain unanimous. Um, and so, if we could re-entertain that motion, and you could choose one of those options, that would be cleanest.
Beautiful.
Okay.
All right, so let's go back to the consent agenda.
I move to approve the consent agenda.
Nice second that.
Roll call.
Hardikoff, aye.
Gibson, aye.
Mantra, aye.
Sakosha, aye.
Capella, aye.
Thank you.
Consent agenda.
There's a lot on the consent agenda. I didn't want anything to be...
That I thought we were gonna do.
I move to adjourn.
I second that.
Hardikoff, aye.
Mantra, aye.
Sakosha, aye.
Capella, aye. Meeting adjourned.